Hey. Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. We appreciate all of our visitors here tonight. And I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on October 25th, 2022, and I ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Gess?
Present.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. We'll have the invocation. Commissioner Wilson is going to lead us with the invocation, and we'll remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here for the many blessings that we have. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. We come to you today asking for guidance and support as we begin this meeting. Please grant us wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of our citizens and our city and our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business we have tonight is a proclamation, and it's a proclamation for residents' rights to recognize Residents' Rights Month, or those who are in assisted living and nursing homes and recognize their rights. And I think this is particularly noteworthy because as our population ages, there's more and more people that transition through nursing homes and extended living places, and I think this is very appropriate. So Bev, are you going to receive it? Is Cassie here? Is anyone here? Okay, all right. So... So this is an official proclamation from the mayor's office, whereas there are 1.3 million individuals in 15,600 nursing homes and over 800,000 individuals living in 28,900 assisted living residential care facilities in the U.S. And whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy, and whereas all residents should be aware of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination, and whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens, to recognize their rich individuality and reaffirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their care. And whereas individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents' Rights Month with the theme Inspiring Unity Within Our Community, emphasizing the importance of fostering meaningful community within the facility and encouraging residents' connection to their local community. Now therefore, I, George Bray, Mayor of the City of Paducah, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as National Long-Term Care Residents' Rights Month in the City of Paducah and encourage all citizens to join me in these important observances. Okay.
Oh, really?
Let's do the selfie. Come on, you can do it. Thank you, Bev. You know, my dad and my father died suddenly back in the early 80s, but my mom lived to be into 2000 and she lived till 2003, but she was in a nursing home last six months of her life. So I experienced what it's like, you know, going in and out. And then my stepfather, Chuck Corden, lived in an assisted living facility, Gaither Suites actually, all the way up. And so I, you know, I saw firsthand what it's like going into those facilities. And I think it's important to maybe to recognize their rights as citizens. Okay, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda tonight. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. City Clerk will read the items recommended for approval. But first, would any commissioner like an item removed for separate discussion? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approve minutes for the October 11th, 2022 Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents, personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for qualifications for energy efficiency services for city facilities, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary to apply for a cybersecurity grant through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security in the amount of $12,474 to establish a cybersecurity governance program, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement and direct payment in the amount of $54,736.28 to game time for the purchase of playground equipment for Coleman Park, municipal order authorizing the finance director to make payment to Atlantic Emergency Solutions Incorporated for sale to the city of one pumper truck in the amount of $679,587 for use by the Paducah Fire Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $120,000 for general aviation and air carrier services, a municipal order accepting the bid of Galls LLC for the purchase of uniforms for the Paducah Police Department employees, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, we have some municipal orders tonight, four of them actually. So we'll ask the, I will ask clerk, please read the first one.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to issue a request for proposals for construction services for pickleball courts to be constructed in Noble Park.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, commissioners, as you're aware, we have began the conversation about joining in the, taking the next step to provide facilities and join in the pickleball craze. To date, we haven't had a big-name star come in and donate us money to build these courts, but so we're going to go out for RFPs and see what we can get. The intent is to construct eight courts, and with us tonight, Mark and Kenny to kind of talk about and walk us through the design of what we've looked at. And then if you approve, we will go out for RFPs.
Well, we got a big-name star here in Mark Thompson, our former Parks and Rec Director. Welcome. Welcome, Mark. Welcome, guys.
Hello, I'm Kenny McDaniel with BFW. Mark Thompson doesn't need a introduction. So basically, we contracted with the city to produce construction documents for pickleball courts. That included the investigation of several sites in Noble Park. I think the general consensus is the current location where we have it. We'll talk about that here in just a minute. We're looking at a very nice setup, in my opinion, for the pickleball courts, looking at a couple of different options probably as alternate bids when the contracts actually go out. But with that, we'll start through with some of our presentation here. Okay, yeah. Okay, Noble Park, the main entrance here off of Hinkleville Road, Park Street, Park Avenue, Park Avenue there. Okay, you can see the tennis courts here on the south side of the Loop Road, and we're going to put the eight pickleball courts across the road. There's a fairly good opening over there. There is a couple of trees, I think maybe four trees, that we'll have to come out with this construction. But very nice location, one of the higher elevations on that side of the park, trying to keep it drained and the everything taken care of there. I apologize, Jonathan Perkins, our landscape architect, is actually managing this project. He's out of town due to a funeral, but he asked me and Mark to step in and kind of go through where we're at, what we've been doing. So basically, looking at a quad layout, eight pickleball courts. You can see the gray area in between, which would be walkways, and then shade structures over those walkways with benches underneath them, so that resting area between games or waiting for the courts to open up. Each one of the courts are separated by fences. We've got, I think, eight-foot fence on the upper ends, on the ends of it, and then four-foot fences down the sides. And then here in the center, we will run that out just a little ways. It won't be fenced completely there, but it will secure the balls in the court. Okay, here's the, here's another aerial view of it, just kind of showing that. You can see the higher fences on the end and the lower fences on the sides. Basically, the idea is that it opens up the area for people to walk through, see it, but it keeps pedestrians separated from the players at all the court locations. So Jonathan did these pictures, by the way, I didn't do them. Again, looking here, where the gentleman is in the orange in this picture, that would be a sidewalk connecting back over to the restrooms that are currently at the tennis facility. So we kind of placed it for separation, but also continuity to use that same area and restrooms and stuff like that. So the colors have not been absolutely decided yet, but that's kind of a typical pickleball layout there. So again, just more rendering pictures from, like I said, that would be where you could sit and watch a game or in between games if you were waiting to play the winner, however that happens. So Mark, have I missed anything so far?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Parking? We're not adding any parking, or is that, is that true?
At this point, go ahead. Okay. At this point, we have looked at where we can put parking. We have not included it in this construction bit, construction set of documents. So.
Is there room on there, like if we were to have a tournament or something, bleachers? Be on the sides or anywhere that could be used?
You'd have to kind of probably choose which way they were going to face. You could put some into some of these areas.
Inside here, or?
In fact, in this area right here on this side of that shelter, you could probably put one right here towards the middle, back this way. Yeah, I'm trying. It's not really. It's not. But anyway, into the area where the checkerboard pattern is right in that area, you just force it up there. You could put one on each court going that way. But we don't have a whole lot. We can put them outside the fences.
Yeah.
And looking in. So that would be acceptable as well. It'd be on a level plane at that point.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not in this design?
No. But I mean, if you brought your portable units in, you could bring those in for something like that.
Yeah.
Which is actually what you have at the tennis courts.
I see. Okay.
There's the last view of it. But yeah, the, I think the portable bleachers at this point, you're looking at the end there where the bicycles are parked, so they'd be probably on either side of the quadplex there to where you could have it. I think basically, as far as tournaments and go like tournaments and things, about eight courts is a minimum that normally has. There are, there are tournaments that would require a lot more. At that point, I think it would probably be scheduled at different venues, and then maybe this be used as the championship rounds type thing. So.
And to that, Kenny is making the point in relationship, if you're talking about tournaments, you know, when we looked at what the opportunity was to have a facility, that was one of the things we did. While we're very aware of the need and the growing of the sport for our local, wanted to also put something in place that would give that opportunity to host a tournament, either regional or even, you know, potentially on a larger scale. In relationship, Commissioner, to your question about bleachers, while you could put them internally, typically, the playing, the spectators is outside the course areas, and so there would be areas for that. And then Mayor, to your question in regards to parking, while we didn't include that in this RFP to release, it is something that we would be looking at as a potential Phase Two to add in. But we do have area close to this that would allow for, you know, parking to be designed at that point. They also wanted to make sure, as Kenny noted, in that first, where the walkway was going back over towards, towards the tennis courts or the restroom, that would be available, but also in a future, you know, phase, potentially with parking, we would look also to the opportunity to increase the restrooms as well as a future phase. But we wanted to get to the point of getting, you know, an RFP out so we could look at having eight courts in the community so we're not just the one that has been restriped on the tennis courts, you know, that we actually have eight courts for our use, plus in addition to the ones that the county just restriped over in the Lone Oak area, to start giving that. And there's potential that there may be consideration in the sports park design as well as some additional courts.
The county also is doing 10 at Heath, restriping 10, the next spring, late next spring.
So they're restriping tennis courts?
They're restriping tennis courts.
They're not building new ones?
No.
And then also important in the RFP and the process, as a, we'll have the opportunity to talk about surface. I know this is interesting to those that play pickleball. You can do an asphalt surface as a laydown, and that's the least expensive, more intensive and upkeep and, you know, the future development of it. But you can also, we're also in the RFP process to allow for a tenciled, a strength concrete option. It is a more expensive option, but it's a more durable option. And it's actually the one that if you look at the United States Pickleball Association and their construction guidebook, that's kind of the recommendation that they look at. So we'll have that in the RFP so we can weigh those cost options.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm glad we're finally participating in the boom, the pickleball boom. And the first, first, first three months I was in office, that was a hot topic, you know, people, and I guess it still is a hot topic. So I'm glad we're, you know, we're able to accommodate. I mean, it's growing nationally, so.
Most definitely.
So this will be to actually build them, to get the bid for?
The RFP would be for construction services, yes. And there still will be an option or an opportunity also for somewhere to, the tennis courts of any of the local pickleball associations wants to make a donation to enhance after we get the RFP to add some additional amenities, that type of thing. You know, we will definitely welcome those conversations as well.
That'd be good. Okay, are we good? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, I'll ask city clerk to please read the next municipal order.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary through the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA for a D R-4663 hazard mitigation grant in the amount of $975,000 for the 14th Street Sewer Project.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner.
Hey, Rick. How are you?
Doing well. Doing well. This project is a continuation of our stormwater comprehensive plan. It's one of the projects that's been named in that, one of those 10 projects. And it's in North 14th Street area and 26th Street. It's a storm sewer interceptor project. It's valued at about 1.7, 1.8 million dollars. And what we're looking to do is take some of the ARPA money, $169,000 of our ARPA money, to be our match for that project. So again, we're using our ARPA money for stormwater projects that we said we would do.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with city manager, you know, just trying to understand. So when we first allocated the $4 million to stormwater projects, we didn't really necessarily anticipate this grant. Is that true? Is that, is that an accurate statement or not?
The brick or the, no, excuse me, I'm confusing grants. These grants, we weren't exactly looking at at the time on that. But these have come out, they're new ones that have come out, and then we're applying for this and trying to, trying to leverage dollars that we have to gain more dollars.
So my point, I guess, was going to be this is additional funds that allows us to?
If we're successful.
If we're successful, this will, this would be additional funds on top of the 4 million that we had allocated.
Correct.
Although we're using part of the 4 million for the match.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be, yes, it would be over that. So the existing $4 million roughly, Rick, is about $500,000 left unallocated.
This will take us down, this will take us down about 300,000.
Using that match out of that, of that original 4 million that was, so it's not, we're not asking for additional of that 4 million.
Right.
Yeah.
And this, this was one of four projects that we were going after with the 4 million dollars, but the two projects that we're pursuing right now, they took the bulk of the 4 million because post-COVID construction prices are inflated. And you recall, I'm like, I'm really hesitant, you know, several months ago to give you a price at the time, but at least we have a better idea of where we are with money right now.
Okay. Okay. Everybody good?
Do we need a motion for this?
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Second.
You can call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, well, I ask Lindsay to read the next, next municipal order.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing and approving a construction contract between the City of Paducah and Dredge America Incorporated for hydraulic dredging of approximately 60,000 cubic yards in a base amount of $995,000 for the Paducah Transient Dock dredging project, authorizing the city engineer to exercise options for dredging in years two and three as contained in the bid of Dredge America Incorporated, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved.
Second.
Rick, you want to tell us about this one?
Yes, Mayor, this is a project that we've been working on for some time. As people have gone to the riverfront, they've seen that, I guess, island building up downstream of our riverfront park. And this is a result of three floods, 18, 19, and 20. We're all high river, and it made this big deposit. And we've got FEMA money to remove a portion of the dredge or the material that needs to be removed to sustain our transient boat dock. Where it's not our intentions to go down there and remove all that material environmentally, we can't. We're going to be removing about 60,000 cubic yards of material and disposing it in deep water out in the Ohio River. The option is if high waters come again, or if we want to get ahead of the high waters, this is going to be a continuing thing over time because Mother Nature is going to continue to deposit. So what we'll be able to do is the year after, we'll do another 60,000 yards, and the third year, we'll do another 60,000 yards, and we'll get ahead of this a little bit. Now, the good thing about this, let's just make the math easy. Let's say that's a million dollars. It's five cents on, it's five cents on the dollar for us. It's $50,000 for that. So we're getting a million dollars worth of work done for $50,000 a year, and we can get way ahead on this.
And would we anticipate that that would be the same in the years to come? I mean...
For the boat, for the transient dock, yes. I don't expect that to change. But we still have the situation with Midwest Terminal that we have not resolved yet.
Right. So the 60,000 yards that we're removing, if we have to remove that in the, in the next couple of years to try to catch up with all this?
Right.
It would be kind of with the same math?
It would be.
Okay.
It would be. Well, a little bit. It gives some different values because the provider has put in a caveat for fuel price increase for the next two years. So the first one's like 975, the next one's a little over a million, the next one's just a little bit over that second number. So.
Okay.
But still, there's only five cents on the dollar for us. Might be 50,000, 60,000, 65,000.
And at the end of three years, is that a permanent solution?
No. Because Mother Nature, when Mother Nature comes up and the river gets up, it, you know, the water's muddy, okay? And what's, what's happening when the water's up, it's raining the mud out. The silt is just raining down. Then when water goes down, what's left is just a big mud pie.
I see. Okay. Any questions, commissioners? All good? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, police call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, I'm excited about this next one, but I'll, well, we have representatives from the Paducah McCracken County Senior Center here, and we're going to talk as well as our internal folks. But I'll let, I'll let Lindsay read the municipal order first.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a 2022 Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1 million through the Department for Local Government to be used to build a new facility for the Paducah McCracken County Senior Center, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved.
Second.
Hope?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners, mayor, city manager, and city clerk. We originally brought this before the commission back on July 26, asking to apply for this CDBG grant, where the city would serve as the applicant and the pass-through for the senior sitter for them to get funding to build this new facility, purchase the lot at 1600 Kentucky Avenue. We partnered with Purchase Area Development on the submission of that application. Since that time, there were some conversations. The state came back and asked if the... The state came back and asked if the senior center would accept one million instead of the one point five that was requested in the application. Went back to the senior center, you know, proposed that question to them, they took it to their board, their board approved it, and they sent us a letter. We submitted that to the state. And then yesterday, we received a pre, a pre-letter notice that we would be receiving that grant for one million dollars and that we would need to return that within the next couple of days to, to say that we wanted to receive that and it could meet the, the requirements of it. So that's where we stand right now. As the mayor mentioned, we do have representatives here from the Paducah Senior Center if you have any questions directly for them.
Thanks, Hope. Chairman Troutman, would you like to come up? And I think all of us would just be interested to know how you're going to spend the million dollars, where you are in the, in the project. I know it's a major project, so.
Will, Mayor, David Troutman, I'm the president of the board of directors of the senior center. Christine Thompson out here, our executive director of the center. Just on behalf of the board and her and all the seniors that enjoy this center for so many years, just want to thank the mayor's office, thank the commission for your support, the city manager's office, Darren Jordan, Hope Reasons, Michelle Smolin. We've had multiple meetings about this for seems like two years and things are, you know, starting to get off the ground, so to speak. I know that a lot of seniors have loved where we're at on H C Mathis Drive. And I'm sure there's some trepidation about leaving that building. However, I'm confident that when this new building gets built in a, in my opinion, a much better location, a more visible location, it's going to be better than ever. And, you know, one thing that we've discussed in our meetings, you know, ever since COVID, is a lot of seniors have just gotten used to not coming back into the center.
Yeah.
For one reason or another. And I'm hopeful that when this does get built, it'll be just a rejuvenation, a, a, just a, obviously, just a, a brand, a grand opening of the entire center and what we do. So I just want to, again, want to thank you for all the support. This million dollars, what it's going to be used for is, of course, is to get this place up and running, but it certainly will not be enough just to build this building. It will cost a whole lot more to build this building, especially in the era that we're, that we're in with COVID. So we will still need, you know, support from McCracken County, which we're working on. We will need support from the community. But this grant that the city has received on our behalf is just what we needed to kind of jumpstart this whole campaign. Because when we go to people and we ask for their support, they want to know, they want to see what it's for. And, you know, visually, kind of like we saw on the, on the, the screen earlier. So this will allow us to kind of jumpstart the campaign, so to speak. So again, we just thank you for, for the support.
So are you, David, are you going to use the million dollars to purchase the land or you already purchased the land?
The purchase of the land is contingent on this grant, which is a long story and I play, explain it to you very well. Miss Reason's good, maybe. But, but yes, the million is used to purchase the land and then start the, you know, the process of hiring an architect and then, of course, bidding out the job. So it won't take long for us to spend it as long as we can get people to work on it.
Yeah.
So which is a whole other set of problems, but.
I know, I know there were some stipulations, some time stipulations in the grant, so we're going to meet all those. There's no, we've got it. God willing.
Yes, exactly. I think currently we're told that the money should be spent by the end of August of 2023. Now, but I also keep hearing that that extension, that, that might get extended, which we certainly hope.
Okay.
So that, that'll help us because again, you know, it's one thing to be ready with the checkbook, it's another to get people who have the time to work on it. And of course, all that takes time, so.
Well, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, brother Troutman, what is the ultimate price tag to?
Well, we, we've received different reports on that, but I mean, it could be as high as maybe four, four million to, 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 to build this building. And we have, you know, we have thought conservatively about this. You know, the current building on H C Mathis is pretty large, larger than what we need. So the idea at this point is have maybe a phase one and a phase two, possibly put two buildings on that lot. You know, phase one would be, you know, our dining hall, kitchen, the primary need, and then hopefully phase two would be more of the, the amenities. So it, it's something that'll probably take years to accomplish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I've been involved with Christine and you, I mean, since, since the beginning, kind of, it seems like, you know, and we kind of caused this because we're, you know, we had this grand plan to move our Parks and Rec offices into the, to the Cherry Civic Center, which I guess is, is in question at some point in time. So maybe you guys will leave us and we'll be there by ourselves, I don't know. But seemed like a good idea at the time, but.
It's growing pains.
Yeah, but, but I, in visiting the senior center and seeing the, the folks that take it, take advantage of the services and the amenities there, it, it, it seems, I mean, they seem to really like it so much. And I know that in talking with Christine, some, a lot of them haven't come back since COVID. So I think there's a real opportunity, build a nice facility, get people back in there and hopefully the numbers will swell again.
That's what we're hoping, Mayor. And one thing I mentioned in, in our meeting this morning, in our monthly meeting, you know, I'm only forty three years old, but in seventeen years, I'll be able to join myself. So, you know, we, we want a place that, you know, is going to, to, to be good for decades to come. So, you know, I think this needed to happen at some point anyway, so I'm just glad.
Yeah, we've already had a proclamation tonight about, you know, a nursing home, long-term care, long, long-term care, residents and their rights and, I mean, the population's aging and so there's more and more seniors, people are living longer. And, you know, people turn, people become a senior and they still got a lot of, a lot of life left in them. And so having a place for people to come together, make, make friends, I think it's, I think it's important. So we wish you well and we're, we're behind you all the way.
Well, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Hope?
Any other questions? Thanks, Hope, appreciate your work on this. Police call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we, the next one is the, it's, it's an emergency ordinance. And I'll let, I'll let our city clerk read the ordinance and then I'll let our city manager or I'll, Chief Kyle, explain it, so.
Our proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce and adopt an emergency ordinance entitled an ordinance approving an agreement for demolition services with Mike Gude excavating in an amount of sixty thousand dollars for emergency partition demolition services to the Catterjohn Building located at fifteen oh one Broadway, ratifying the city manager's declaration of an emergency and execution of said agreement and declaring an emergency to exist. Said ordinance is summarized as follows. In this emergency ordinance, the City Paducah approves a contract with Mike Gude excavating for partial demolition to the Catterjohn Building in a total amount of sixty thousand dollars and ratifies the city manager's execution of the declaration of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Chief Kyle, tell us, this has been, this has been quite, quite a journey here with the Catterjohn Building, so tell us about it.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, city manager, city clerk. As most of you are, I believe, are aware by now, we did do a partial demolition to the Catterjohn. What prompted that demolition was a change in part of the building's status. We called in an engineer, had it evaluated, it's unstable. The building was unsecured, we couldn't keep it secured as we had many, many entries into the building. We'd secure it, they'd go right back within an hour. So the engineer's determination of the instability of the structure, coupled with the inability to keep the building secured and the owner not participating in that led us to the emergency order of demolishing that section of the building that was unstable. That has been completed, the instability piece of the rear portion of the building has been completed. Part of that, another piece of that demolition included the smokestack that has been, as of this afternoon, that has been completed. It is to a level to where we don't have to worry about that now. With the remaining portions that need to be completed, the stabilization of the front porch, which is a shoring that we're going to do, it was determined that shoring the porch would lead to less problems than trying to remove the porch off the front of the building. And then we've got a couple of areas on the backside of the building there where we've removed that rear section that have to be made weather tight or as weather tight as it can be in this situation to prevent further deterioration. This is a stopgap and we only addressed what had to be done. There are other areas of the building that are continuing to degrade. There's a portion of the building where you could put a vehicle through it even in, in the, what remains. So just want to understand, this, this didn't take down the entire building. We only addressed what we absolutely had to and we are securing the rest of the building to keep vagrants out of it. That has been a major problem with this. We're getting calls every single day, multiple times a day.
Questions?
Yes, I've got, so how long are we looking at with the other part of the building? So we've taken down a part of it, but we still have a structure that's a mess. We do, that's not something I can really predict. There may come a time where there'll be some significant change in the building status as we keep an eye on it that will prompt us to enact another emergency order. Through that process, we'll follow the same one we did this time and we'll engage an engineer to guide us on what we need to do. And, and we're, we're trying to not attack the whole building at once, we're just addressing the pieces that we have to. But there may come a point in time in the future where we have to. Do it all. Do it all. So it just remains an eyesore, so it's kind of like spitting in the ocean, I guess. You got, you got some of it down, but it still creates a problem.
Well, it's, it's a complicated situation. We don't own the building, someone else owns the building, but we have responsibility for safety. And so that's why we went through this emergency order. So we'll, hopefully, there'll be a resolution, a long-term resolution, we'll work for resolution, certainly.
We will.
And, but, but for now, is it safe to say for now, we're, we're finished with, with our demolition?
We, we are, we're done with our demolition. Two remaining things left that should be completed the next week or so. And that is the shoring of the porch, where you've seen scaffolding up there, we're going to take the scaffolding down, put a, put some kind of shoring in there. And then to cover up some area there on the back of where the lower portion of the building was demolished to prevent weather getting in that. And then that'll have us completely out of it until the next time. So I would, I'm sorry, Mayor, so what I, I would imagine in that we will continue to try to work with the owner to try to.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
We, you know, that's, that's been our goal from the beginning, you know, is to, is to work with the owners and we'll continue to try to move in that direction. Are we good? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
We have one final item on the agenda for tonight, which is the adoption of an ordinance that we had the first reading of a couple of weeks ago, and that is the zoning text amendments. Is Josh here or?
Nick's here.
Nick's here, okay. And I think we went over this a couple of weeks ago, I want to make sure are, were there any, this was, we talked about the sign ordinance, that was a big part of our discussion. Like we went pretty deep on that to try to understand it. Are there any additional questions from anybody?
No.
While Nick is here. Okay, I think we can, I think we can call roll on this one as well.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance amending chapter one twenty six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends section one twenty six dash thirty two zoning of annexed land to update initial zoning policy upon annexation, section one twenty six dash seventy six sign regulations to clarify time limits for certain temporary signs and sign size requirements in commercial and industrial zones. Section one twenty six dash ninety eight accessory dwelling unit, A D U, to clarify the location of accessory buildings, units, accessory building units to be outside of a principal structure. Section one twenty six dash one twenty neighborhood services zone, N S Z, to add bed and breakfast as a conditional use in the neighborhood services zone. And section one twenty six dash one seventy six planning commission to bring public hearing requirements into compliance with KRS one hundred and KRS four twenty four, change when the development plans are needed in certain instances and remove the requirement for a sketch plan for consideration of preliminary development plans in order to be more business friendly. Said amendments were heard by the Paducah Planning Commission at public hearing on September eighth, twenty twenty two, and forwarded to the city commission with recommendation, with recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So with that, we'll move to comments. City manager, any comments?
Mayor, Commissioner, just briefly on three items. We mentioned the Cherry Civic Center. We continue to, to work through the impact that the truck had on the building and the structural. And as we re, look at that, how we write our RFP specs to be able to identify those aspects for remediation due to that, so we can, so that damage that was done versus the holistic remodeling of it, to keep those separate, but also put them into a package where they can bid at once, but we still have for the insurance purposes in moving through that. So we don't have a time, a timeline on that because we're still working through the insurance process on that.
Who is our insurance carrier or who is the insurance carrier?
Ours is Collins and Co., is that right? Is our, I was looking for Stephanie. KLC is, but through Collins, yeah.
I don't know the name of it. They've been in contact with us the other.
So the person that ran into the building had insurance as well, or is this all, are we covered, or is it our insurance that covers it?
I, I believe that there was insurance on the, from the company that, that had from the driver on that, because I believe there was conversation. Stephanie, you have any?
So KLC is working with us and they'll subvert it to cover insurance.
I see, okay.
I don't know what kind of limits they have in place where KLC would kick in for anything above the limits on.
Okay, okay. Do we have a new timeline and when you think you'll get all this?
Not as we sit here tonight, we're still working through that process to ensure that we, the RFP can be put together to where we can identify those, those costs that were required because of the damage to the building versus the initial cost of remediation or renovation, I'm sorry.
So somebody working with us to?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we still can, in conversation with Jeff Kanter and his team is working on through that aspect.
Okay.
I think it did still have the offices for Parks and Rec in it, okay. We were talking earlier, I thought, wait, did, I didn't miss something, did we? We were keeping those in there.
Yeah, those would be to the backside of, kind of from the stage area back, the original of that, to the backside of the building. The other, we, we mentioned stormwater, just giving you an update that at our next commission meeting, we'll be giving you an update on those projects as they've been moving forward with that ARPA funding, kind of give you a, an overview of where those projects stand and how that money has been allocated up to this point. I wanted to have a few more details before we brought that, but that is on our schedule for our next commission meeting.
Great.
And then also, speaking of our next commission meeting, just for public knowledge, we will be adjusting the November meetings from the regularly scheduled to push back a week. So we'll have two special called meetings in the month of November instead of the regularly called.
And that will be on the fifteenth and twenty ninth instead of the?
The eighth and twenty second. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioners, anything from commissioners?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Well, I believe I would entertain a, a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.